Looks like we got a handful of people on my else.
Yeah, it's good. Alright, we'll go ahead and get started here. Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Stewart. I'm the city manager here in Ridgefield. Thank you so much for joining us either live or virtually for an opportunity to meet and get to know the finalists for appointment to Ridgefield City Council position number five. The Ridgefield City Council is grateful to the applicants, attendees, and all those who submitted questions for the candidates to assure a full and fair process to appoint a new member who will serve with them until election certification in November of 2025. And special thanks to our finalists here this evening for the work you've already done. Uh, we know that it takes a lot uh to put yourself out there, uh not only to fill out the applications, but to really put yourself out to the community and for the community. And we all in this room and beyond in the community appreciate that. So thank you for what you've done on that. At tonight's forum, each candidate will be allotted one minute for both an introduction and a closing statement. I'll present a series of questions that we've received from residents of the city of Ridgefield. The questions will be posed individually, allowing each candidate two minutes to respond. And we do two minutes because if we're gonna do public comment at too much, you gotta get used to it. Just the two-minute buzzer. So we're gonna go two minutes for each one of those. Uh, and we're going to kind of keep it fair by making sure that a different candidate uh is selected to go first on each question. So we'll switch. We'll switch at each time on that. And then the last thing I wanted to make sure I mention is that the session is live streaming and is being recorded. And that recording will be made available for public viewing after March 26th, which will accommodate residents who are unable to attend the live event. So with that, and no further ado, we will get started with our introductions. And before we start this evening, we drew numbers. And our first candidate to begin them, I think, is Ms. Katie Favella. So please proceed.
Thank you so much, Steve. And thank you to the public of Ridgefield who are here tonight. I really appreciate it. Uh, my name is Katie Favella. My husband and I are Ridgefield residents. We've lived in Ridgefield for well over 10 years, maybe over 12 years. Uh, I'm a licensed clinical social worker and therapist. Um, I'm a child mental health specialist and mental health professional. In my current capacity, I own a private practice, but I'm also a director uh doing program implementation for a mental health teaching clinic to bridge the gap between college education and the real-life application of what we're asking therapists and clinicians to do with working the family, um specifically in community mental health. My husband is a first responder, so community is our whole life. We have two children in the Ridgefield School District. Uh, our son attends Ridgefield High School and our daughter attends South Ridge Elementary. In my free time, I am the system partner representative for the statewide FISBRT, which is the Family Youth System Partner Roundtable. It's a part of the children's behavioral health government structure of the state of Washington.
Go ahead.
Um, and I'm, I've also served on planning commission for the last two years. And I'm excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Favella. Now our second candidate, Mr. Stefan Molenax.
Here we go. Uh, hello. Thanks for having me. Uh, my name is Stefan Molenax, if you've heard. Uh, my background is I'm a mechanical engineer. Uh, I've lived in Washington State almost my entire life. I grew up in a small town like, you know, well, maybe not as uh integrated as this town, uh random Washington. Very small town, very small schools where you knew everybody and, you know, your, your behavior and everything, you know, followed you wherever you went. So uh, I'm familiar with, you know, um how important it is in a small community that we take care of each other and that we watch out for each other. And, you know, there's a lot more uh important things uh, you know, when we're, when we're talking about uh small communities that we, uh, when it comes to uh, you know, watching out for each other. So uh, a little bit more on my background. Uh, mechanical engineer. I've worked in the glass industry. I've worked in uh saw manufacturing. I've worked in automotive a little bit, um construction materials. I've worked in a lot of, of high stress, um very important uh to get things right the first time. So where critical, you know, attention to detail is paramount, or it's important that, you know, if something goes wrong because you didn't, you know, check your, cross your Ts and dot your Is, you know, somebody might die. Um, so uh, I've worked on a lot of projects from construction to, you know, um just ergonomic things to make things for people's lives better. Um, so I don't have a, you know, a background in, in necessarily uh political or, you know, city, but uh I've always been around to help. And that's my biggest thing is, you know, teamwork and, and all that stuff. So that's a little bit about me. We moved to the area two years ago, uh December during that snowstorm. It was great. Hope you guys all remember that because I was driving. Uh, not, not so fun. My wife is a nurse here in Longview and Kelso. Um, so we're happy to be in the area. We're happy you guys accepted us. Um, everyone that we've ever brought to the town is so excited because we have nothing but good things to say. Every time we bring somebody here, you know, somebody is sitting down on the sidewalk, wants to talk to you, and we love that. So uh, thanks again for the attendance.
Thanks to both of you for the introductions. So we'll now move into questions. And I should have mentioned this at the top, but uh we are scheduled to go from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And so I'm watching the clock to make sure that we get you all out of here by 7:00 PM. And we'll wrap up the questions about 5:00 till uh somewhere there. So we have plenty of time for closing remarks from both of you. So we'll start out with questions that are really responsive to the council's goals. Our city council creates goals uh to help guide the work that they do in policy and budget. Um, so we are framing these questions that we receive from the public in the categories of which goal they really respond to. So the first goal that we'll be covering is planning and managing the growth of the city. The first question, which I believe we'll start with you, Ms. Molenax, uh would be, how do you evaluate the effectiveness of policies and programs implemented by the city council? How would you do that?
Uh, just for clarification, uh evaluating as they are right now?
So I think the way that I'm reading this from how it was written uh to us from a resident is um for any, any policy or program that you as a city council member would be implementing, how would you judge its success? How would you evaluate the effectiveness of that policy or program that you would handle that?
Well, I think that's a difficult singular answer to give because there's a lot of different, you know, uh types of policies. And, you know, the, the key measure of success in that is going to depend on what it is doing. Um, obviously, I come from a mathematical engineering background. So, you know, financial, uh, you know, keeping under, keeping it in or under budget if all possible, um meeting the goals that were set from the original, you know, or measuring against those. And then uh, you know, potentially, um, you know, the, the, the feedback at the end of it, right? I mean, it depends, I, without knowing what policies we're talking about, I find that kind of difficult to answer. But um, you know, feedback at the end, you know, were your customers satisfied? Who was the customer in this one for the policy? Um, were they satisfied? Were there was a road? Did we put it in? Was it big enough or small? You know, not already we have traffic, um, or roundabout, whatever. Um, did it make things worse? Um, so I don't have a great answer for that, but I think that my best answer is the numbers.
Alright, thank you. Same question.
It's a hard question.
I maybe that, I really did start off without throwing a softball first. I really like, there was no warm-up pitch with that. So I'll have to work on that.
Sorry, Steve. Can you repeat the question?
Not a problem. So how would you evaluate the effectiveness of policies and programs that you were a part of implementing as a city council member?
This is difficult because it doesn't really specify, you know, what narrowing down what we're talking about. But I think when we're looking at policy and program implementation, there's various components that we have to look at. Are we looking at economical sustainability or what this program or implementation is gonna do? Are we changing a code with something and how is this going to affect the public, the citizens when we're changing or implementing something that could be, you know, driveway or sidewalk spacing in new builds? Like, is that a policy that we're going to implement or a code that we're going to now regulate? And how will this impact? So again, without having like a very specific uh policy or procedure that we're trying to implement, it really is looking at the full picture of how is this going to impact the community positively or negatively? And are there any unintended consequences that we haven't really looked at if we moved into that implementation?
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna stay downtown for this one. So one of the other goals of the city council is to revitalize downtown as a destination location. And for you, Ms. Favella, starting with you, the question from a resident is, what do you think the city should be doing to help our downtown be successful?
Okay, well, I love downtown. And uh, my husband and I live very close to downtown and we frequent downtown often. Um, downtown, I feel, is the staple of our community. It's where our Fourth of July parade is held. This is where our waterfront is. Our festivities are held. The city is doing a great job with making sure that we still have this small-town charm, that there are issues that come up with growing. There's parking issues downtown. It impacts our businesses. When we have um community events on the weekend, first Saturday, or big public events, the biggest complaint that I hear from businesses downtown is not, it's, yes, they get business, but they also have a hard time finding parking to open their own business or to be able to show up in the way that they need to. So it's finding the balance of how do we sustain this growth, but also listen to the voices? And again, how this impacts um those around us who are a part of that growth? Um, allowing our businesses to thrive, our community members to enjoy what we're putting in place for them, uh but also growing in a way that is going to remain giving Ridgefield that charm that we have and not losing that.
Thank you. Ms. Molenax?
Uh, I, I agree. Um, you know, one of the biggest issues here that we have uh is hands-down parking. Um, I think downtown, especially as it grows, I mean, coming up shortly, not necessarily in downtown, but you know, with Costco and In-N-Out, McDonald's, Panda, you know, more people are gonna be coming in the area. That means more people are gonna be available to come downtown, see the rivers, to see, you know, the waterfront, to go to businesses and stuff at Ridgefield, you know, do all that. What we have now is probably just the start of the wave, right? So I agree, you know, working on implementing a better parking thing is, is probably the way to go. I've run through it many a time, especially during first Saturday events. Don't get me wrong, I love them. I've been to many of them. Uh, but if you need to do anything downtown, uh, you're probably not going to, you know, have a good time. Uh, if, if you're not attending the event. But um, I think another thing that, that's big is we're kind of shoehorned in here, right? I mean, we've got uh pretty forested areas, hills, mountains over there where you're not really gonna be able to develop that easily a, a workable um city area. Um, you know, other than residential housing, small communities. And then we've got a river on another side. And, you know, it's, we don't have a refuge on another side. So uh, we don't have a whole lot. So utilizing what we have thoughtfully, um, I think we need to do something about improving the sidewalks and the parks' visual appeal. Um, that's one of the big things, you know, if you go down to the park just, just down the road here, you know, the sign is kind of withering and wearing away. Um, I think we have a great town as is. Um, we just need to prepare for what we're bringing in out there that's gonna come over here. So uh, that's what I got.
Alright, thank you too. Uh, shifting right into, nice segue into some infrastructure talk. So one of the other goals of the city council is to assure that the city's infrastructure is able to meet the growing community needs, uh which you've already both uh getting, given a little time to. The question that we were asked to ask you is what leadership position are you going to take to ensure the infrastructure of this town can support growth, whether it be schools, roads, sewers, et cetera, to limit the impact to existing citizens, uh as opposed to developers and newer citizens moving in so that there is a share in the greater burden of cost? Long question. Uh, I'll read it one more time and then I think we start with you, Ms. Molenax. So that's what leadership position are you going to take to ensure that the infrastructure of this town to support growth, including schools, roads, sewers, et cetera, um will limit the impact to existing citizens and share the burden of the cost?
Uh, yeah, that is a long question. Uh, I think a, a good thing that I, I provide, you know, I've had a lot of experience with very difficult, high-stress dangers, projects, and, and the experience with, you know, the details, watching and, and making sure that things are there when we need them. Do we have the right contingencies? Do we have the right uh, you know, uh terminology? Do we have uh everything accounted for that we might not necessarily think of? Like, for instance, you know, one thing looking, you know, one, one thing we put out recently, or you guys put out recently, not me, obviously, but uh, you know, is, is the new where Costco's going. We have two roundabouts going into one roundabout. Two roundabouts is a fantastic thing, alright? But we have one roundabout in the center for the choke point. So we have all this traffic being diverted. Why did Portland turned away In-N-Out? Because of traffic. So thinking ahead and making sure that we are very careful with paying attention to, you know, traffic studies and um, and making sure that we, we can predict a little bit ahead, at least have, you know, I don't know, maybe you guys already did. I haven't seen, obviously, that. But um, paying attention to those details is what I provide, I think. That's where I would be. So, thank you.
Ms. Bowe?
I think this is probably one of the biggest questions that come up for anybody who's been in Ridgefield for a long time. It is no secret that we are the fastest-growing city in the state of Washington. And how do you grow and make that growth sustainable, not just for right now? So when we look at growth and infrastructure, we wanna look at both the economic balance. Is this economically sustainable for Ridgefield? What does this bring in? But also how do those goods and services impact um our residents and our citizens? With managing the growth in the schools, having big businesses like Costco come in, is it ideal? No, but what this provides for our city is a really foundational, solid income stream that you're not going to get from a development because developments are only a one-time tax. You don't get any more money off of that, um, you know, revenue coming into the city. So this provides that economic sustainability. But, you know, we have an ownership as citizens of Ridgefield to educate ourselves on the Growth Management Act and how the city has to grow. And it is our responsibility to make sure that we are voting for school bonds and making sure that our educational system is sustainable. Um, the city cannot do a stop growth because people are not voting for our bonds. Um, and we also can't stop growing either. So there has to be some give and take with the community and education for ourselves, our, our, as citizens. Um, but also being responsible with council and city staff to make sure that what we're doing is uh in the best interest of the community, both on the financial component and the growth component.
Excellent. Thanks both of you. Alright, we're gonna light it up just a little bit here. So one of the other, uh, one of the other goals of the council is to maximize the city's natural resources and attractions. So starting with you, Ms. Favella, is name your three favorite natural spaces, places, or attractions that you like to spend time in here in Ridgefield. Top three.
Waterfront, hands down. I love kayaking, uh, hanging out by the water. Um, I love all of our trails. My husband and I have a goal of walking every single trail by the end of the summer. So we, uh, um, they're, uh, oh my gosh, here I'm moving words at the state of the city. We enjoyed walking through and looking near all the trails just to make sure we didn't have any secret hidden ones. And, oh, I just see the refuge. It's beautiful, like golden hour at the refuge. And there's something so peaceful about being at the refuge early in the morning or at golden hour, entering the train go-by. And yeah, it's all my favorite. And hence why we've been there for so long. Thank you.
Ms. Molenax? Same question.
Uh, that's a, that's a tough one to follow up on, obviously. Uh, the refuge is, is a big one. Uh, I've been in there quite a bit. I, my wife and I are, you know, we like to walk our dogs. We like to uh, you know, just go walking together, to spend time together. Uh, it's a good way to get out of the house and just kind of de-stress. You know, she's a nurse and, you know, she sees some, you know, tough things to see all day, every day. And, you know, I've worked, uh, you know, several different jobs, you know, in engineering with, you know, high stress. Um, there's not very many ways that are better to, to relax than just kind of get out and see the sunset she was talking about, or walking across the uh, the, the land trail, you know, over to the refuge. Other than that, um, we spend a lot of time, that's a tough one because there's a lot of good areas. Uh, I know, you know, three of them, you're like, oh, man. Uh, you know, we spend a lot of time down here at the, the parks here, just even here, a little bit of park and everything like that, down at the waterfront. Um, I kind of keep count. Those is kind of the same thing. I mean, it's, well, we walk back and forth. Um, and then we have, we have a small uh little walking trail out behind our little community up by the high school. Um, that's just kind of relaxing. You can hear birds and everything like that. It's a real good place to walk your dog. So I don't, I don't think a lot of people know about that area because it's kind of in our community, but it's good. So.
Alright, thank you too. Alright, starting with you, Mr. Molenax. The next goal that we're gonna cover here is one that the council has set to actively engage and communicate with the Ridgefield community. So specifically thinking about your uh involvement, your life in general, can you provide an example from your past experience where you actively sought out and considered diverse viewpoints in a decision-making process?
Uh, I mean, I've had a lot of experiences in, in very diverse situations as an engineer, working with lots of different, you know, trades and everything. But I can think of a good, a good example uh more recently is, you know, I'm on the Clark County mosquito control district board. Obviously, anyone who lives here in Ridgefield knows that mosquitoes are, you know, the bane of our existence for, you know, a good por- portion of the year. And uh, you know, we're, we're actively working to fix that, um, you know, working with Refuge to get the right uh contracts so that we can, we can, they can treat there and uh, and everything like that. But when we're working that, we're working with groups of people that are a, you know, part-time, um, people who have PhDs, you know, a very diverse group of thing, uh, people. And we're, we're trying to, to work to make their environment more suitable, make them more effective, and then in the long term, affect everyone here. Um, so that your, your, your time to work outside in the summer, in the spring, you know, and fall is a little bit easier. So um, you know, when I first moved here, um, we, we really loved the area and I wanted to get involved. And I've never really, when I was in Shalos, we were, I was not really a uh, a go-getter in the sense of, you know, involvement. It was, there was no community. And when we moved here, that changed. I said, I wanna be involved here. And I met with Rob Akeley and had uh Ridgefield and we had talked. And, and, you know, he said, get involved. And, and here I am on the mosquito control board and trying further again yet to be more involved. So, you know, we love the area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowe. Same question. Do you want me to read the question again or?
Yes.
Oh, of course. So can you provide an example from your past experience where you actively sought out and considered diverse viewpoints in a decision-making, making process?
Yeah, I think one of the most important parts of what I do outside of um my typical job role is I am on the Ridgefield School District Equity and Engagement Advisory Board. And we review data uh from the school district. Students and parents and staff offer this data up. And part of my role with my private practice, I have an MOU with the Ridgefield School District, providing mental health services to our students. And there are often times where we have families coming in with challenging situations and people trying to speak into their space of what this family needs. And being able to sit with these families and getting to know them and understanding their background, what brings them to the table, what drives their family, and how do we address their family in a way that is going to be suitable for them? Um, that isn't going to be suitable for another family. So when we talk about diversity or uh seeing different viewpoints, my whole career is based off of uh getting to know people, speaking to them, and being able to speak into their space to meet them where they're at, to provide them what they need, or to help them help themselves provide what they need.
Thanks very much. Alright, next question. We're gonna talk a little bit about city council work. See if I can find it. There it is. So the question, and starting with you, Ms. Favella, is, what strategies would you use to navigate competing interests within the city council to come to solutions?
It's a really good question. I think when you are working with a group of people, you're always going to have competing interests. And I think when you really hear what's needing to be said or what people are saying, if you're asking questions and listening to hear people without listening to think what you're going to say next, I think you can really understand both viewpoints. Typically, when there is an argument and you hear both sides, parties want the same thing. They just have a different idea of how they should navigate that to get there. So my role is to not choose sides, but to hear and how do we come together with our differences so that we can continue to move forward without creating any sort of negativity or um, you know, creating a divide amongst that. We're all here for a purpose. And if we can focus on our purpose and leave our personal um at the door where needed, that is how we um create a strength to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Molenax, you want me to reread the question?
Uh, you can.
Alright, it is? It is what strategies would you use to navigate competing interests within the city council to come to solutions?
So I think, you know, in my experience, you know, now more than ever, everyone is, we as a society have, have really diverged. Everyone has different interests. Everyone, you know, uh, is more up in arms about their, their personal beliefs or, you know, that they're right and, and, you know, you're wrong. When I was in, you know, sixteen to, say, college, I, I taught snowboarding at White Pass Ski Resort for, you know, several years. And you try to teach somebody to do something when they're terrified, when they're scared. You learn to, to read somebody in a, in a way where you can kind of understand um where they're coming from and why they, they feel so strongly about that. Why are they scared of falling down this hill or turning to the left? And, and so you, you learn to, to kind of uh communicate with somebody and understand why they have their point of view. And then to be able to kind of, not necessarily redirect it because you're not telling them they're wrong, but maybe understanding their point of view so that if you have an alter, alternate point of view or you think that, you know, maybe we need to go in a slightly different direction, that, that you can explain to them in a way that makes sense to them why, why we need to, to change our direction. In addition to that, um, one of the biggest things that I think in, in meetings and board meetings and all that stuff is, is you get a little off-topic and, you know, I, I, I'm just as bad at that as, you know, as anyone else. But uh, uh, maybe, maybe more sometimes. But um, coming back to the idea of what is the, who's the customer and what, what did they want? What was the intent? Why are we here? Um, so, you know, making, making points to put in your notes occasionally, you know, to check in. Like, are, are we on topic? Are we, are we, are we going where we should be going? Um, and then you can explain that to people like, hey, it's great that you love that and that, that you want that, but maybe we need to, to reel that in a little bit and, and get back on point. And then we can, and we can talk about that later, or maybe we add that in at the end if it, if there's time or money or whatever. So.
Thank you very much. And perfect segue into the next question, which is a question that gets asked as the first question in a lot of job interviews. And it's a question that was asked by our residents. It's, why do you want the job? So that question will start with you, Mr. Molenax.
Okay. Uh, why do I want the job? Um, like I said, when, when we, my wife and I moved here, uh, you know, one of the first, first things that we noticed, you know, we brought my mom here and everything. Uh, we went downtown and there were people walking, sitting on the, on the benches. And they would say, hey, how's your day going? You know, are you new here? Are you just visiting? You know, people will talk to you and all that stuff. And, you know, the same thing was true when you sit down. I've had many a conversation at the various restaurants with random people. I've met a lot of dogs. I've met a lot of people, uh, you know. And it, it's a wonderful community. And we have a lot of change going on. And I've Uh, you know, and it, it's a wonderful community and we have a lot of change going on and I, I'm worried that with a lot of change going on, we'll lose sight of ourselves. We're a small town in the sense here, you know, we've got, but you get a Costco here, you get all those other things here, don't get me wrong, I'm a just as excited for In-N-Out as anyone, you know, uh, probably, if not more, um, but I don't want to lose that ability where you can go downtown and somebody says hi. You go to the Midwest and you go to a bar or a restaurant, you sit down, you say hi, somebody's gonna tell you their life story. I used to race golf carts or, you know, go-karts and this is what I did, and here you sit down at a bar or a restaurant, I'm not here in Ridgefield, but in Washington in the Pacific Northwest, uh, I think we've lost sight of that and people are more like, why are you looking at me, why are you talking to me, and we don't have that here and I don't want to lose that, so I want to be involved and help that.
Thank you, Ms. Favela.
It's a really good question, um, okay, I'm gonna have my professional and then my little sassy side, um. I've been in Ridgefield for so long and, um, being involved in our community, I, uh, for the last few years, well, my son's a junior in high school, so since he's been a freshman, I've been the parent rep for the football team. And I'm super involved in our district, whether it's with our MLU, with, um, being a part of the, leading up the football team, getting to know people in the community, working with our officers, uh, in a professional capacity with crisis, mental health crisis that they respond to, and being on planning commission. I feel like this is the next step to, you know, further myself in where I see, uh, myself going with the city and um, putting myself in, in places that I can take the knowledge that I've already gained and speak into a different space that I haven't spoken into yet. The sassy answer is, we're growing really fast and people have a lot to say. And here we are with openings for city council and how many people applied? How many people are going to sit up here and speak into this space because they have a lot to say? And yet they're not here, so I have a lot to say and I'm here because I want to say it, thank you.
Thank you, both of you, all right. Back to budget, uh, one of the other goals of the city council is to create and maintain economic stability for the city. A question that was asked is because one of the council's primary jobs is to adopt a budget, what do you see as the top two funding priorities? And Ms. Favela, you'll go first.
Okay, um, top funding priorities, I mean, there's so many, we just on planning commission went over the, um, our new plan for the Growth Management Act, our comprehensive plan, there's a lot in there. I think really just that overall, uh, infrastructure, we have the sewer management plan that we're doing, uh, road, building up on roads, making sure that we have capacity to do that, um. There's so many things, I think just with growth, you have the, the things that need to be put in place, but other than the things like sewer and roads, it's the businesses and services that we're gonna put here and how is this going to impact? Are we looking at demographics and the services that we have, um, in Ridgefield? We, and when you look at the population of Ridgefield, we have a high population of younger generations. It's not, you know, an older generation is phasing out, but it, they're still here and we need services for all, um, generations, all, all the population that we have in Ridgefield, so making sure that with that growth and infrastructure that we're putting in place, the goods and services that we're meeting and looking at those demographics to make sure that we're hitting those points in a sustainable way.
Thank you, Mr. Mullinax.
Uh, yeah, uh, where do you start on that one, right? Uh, she's exactly right and I, you couldn't probably beat that answer very much, um, we have a lot of, we have a lot of things coming on with all the growth. You know, it's a double-edged sword for me, right, because I'm part of the growth, I moved here in the last two years, right, so I can't be, I'm not the, you know, the old guard or anything like that, I'm one of the new guys, right, so that's hard to come in and say, you know, we gotta, we gotta shore up things so that the new people don't ruin things, I'm one of them, but thank you for having me. I don't see any pitchforks or any flames, so I'm glad to be here. Now, I think our inf- like I brought up earlier, you know, our, our infrastructure and making sure that our roads can handle it, because what is one thing that I think anyone that drives on Royal or any of those roads that have had construction lately sees? Is they're falling apart, right, we have had so much construction vehicles and that, that it just, it's killing our roads. So our infrastructure on, you know, our roads, um, you know, making sure that we have enough of the utilities that, you know, ready for all that, all that kind of lumped into one, if you'll let me. And then the other thing, um, I don't have kids, uh, my wife and I, uh, don't have kids right now, um, and, and potentially in the future, uh, but not right now. And, um, my neighbor, uh, brought up to my attention the other day, you know, she was out knocking on doors, talking about the bond and, and she brought up the fact of how many kids are in these schools and where they, you know, and, and where their shortfalls are, and I think really paying attention to that. I came from a small school where the, the classrooms were filled about as much as this room is right now. Uh, you know, not overfull and I know the benefits of having the proper, you know, amount of people to a teacher and the facilities to do it and I can't imagine not being able to play sports because there's too many kids or, you know, not having the, the faculty or the facilities to do any of these, you know, anything. Um, so I think that's the other one that we need to figure out here.
All right, thank you both of you. All right, starting with you, Mr. Mullinax, we'll do a question, this was actually a statement and then from a resident and then there was a question at the end where if you lilt at the end of it, then it's a question, so, um, they actually had a statement followed by a question is what we're calling it. So the statement was the selection of a council replacement with a commitment to diversity and inclusion is essential for fostering a representative and responsive local government. That's a statement, the question, starting with you, Mr. Mullinax, is how would you describe the diversity growing within our community and what steps would you take as a council member to ensure that the city council reflects and understands the various perspectives of our residents?
That is a, yeah, wow, that's a lot, um, that's a, that's a tough one to answer, right, because diversity, you don't get a choice in diversity, right? Diversity is, is all around us, it's, you know, I, that can mean a bunch of things, it could be ways of life, where you came from, how you choose to live, um, and it's, it's not my, I've lived always more along the, the the thought and the viewpoint that you could, that everyone should live how they want to live. I, I, it's not my job to tell you how to live and, and all that, and I'm happy for, to, to say that, that diversity is important, um. How do you, how do you foster that, I mean, without knowing, without knowing what you're looking at, I mean, it's, it's hard to say, I mean, that, that's a tough one. I guess the best way to, to, to answer that, I guess for me would be to say, you know, take each, each situation, uh, one at a time, evaluate it and see how you can leave the person or the group best, better at the end of the day. I don't think there's an, an easier answer than that, but it's, or harder answer than that, because it is easy and hard at the same time, but. At the end of the day, you just need to, to make sure that you have, you've left that person or that group better off than when you started. Whatever that may be, sorry for the big answer on that.
So, thank you very much, Ms. Favela, you want me to read the question, uh?
Just a question.
Just the question, you got it. Uh, we're not taking, and so just for the audience, there was a hand that went up, we're not actually taking questions from the audience, we have questions that were submitted, we're not doing back and forth, so we're actually live, so I, I don't want to take any comments at this moment, so, no, thank you. The question that was asked, just so that you have it again, is how would you describe the diversity within our community? And what steps would you take as a city council member to ensure that this council reflects and understands the various perspectives of our residents?
Thank you, you know, I, it depend, like Stefan was saying, it depends on, you know, what you look at diversity. If, are we looking around and just doing the visual context, are we looking around at skin color, are we looking around at, uh, age? What are we, what are we looking at with diversity, but whether than trying to look around and see and trying to pinpoint what diversity looks like, it's making sure that we have people come in and speak into a space that you're welcoming of all people and their beliefs. We don't need to categorize people or say, oh, look at Ridgefield and how diverse we're getting by popping up numbers. It's how we treat people and take ownership when people walk through the door, come to Ridgefield and accepting them for who they are. This is a small town, we do have small town charm, but it doesn't mean that we need to have small town ideals and a small town mentality that when we're engaging with other people. People love being in Ridgefield because we are friendly. People love coming and seeing the things that we celebrate, the things that we talk about, um, and I'm appreciative of that. We have a diverse law enforcement team who is actively engaged with our community and making sure that they can speak to various populations, um, and we have an amazing, uh, chief of police who makes sure that she can capitalize on our law enforcement officers and finding their strengths and how they're going to best serve our community. And that is how we capitalize on diversity, thank you.
Thank you. All right, right back to you, Ms. Favela, the next question we have is about collaboration within the community. That is, how would you collaborate with local community organizations and advocacy groups, uh, to better our community? A little duplicative in the language here, sorry.
This is an area I'm very comfortable, um, in doing, again, I'm with the district's Equity Engagement Board, uh, working with our law enforcement officers, both professionally, um, and within the school district, working with parents and students in the school district, uh, planning commission, city council members. I mean, I'm not afraid to speak to anyone about anything at any time, so, uh, I love engaging with our community and I'm happy to, uh, you know, connect, one of the things that it's okay, I'll speak clearer, clearer for your phone. One thing that I appreciate, uh, that the city is doing is making sure that, uh, with our, on planning commission, there's a community engagement and reaching out to different populations and diverse groups to make sure that when we're making decisions here in Ridgefield, we can capture the voices of those, uh, diverse populations and, uh, I've offered up many areas. My husband and I are also a host family for Ridgefield Raptors baseball team since they've come to Ridgefield, so I mean, I feel like we're everywhere all at the same time. Um, and these are my people, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mullinax, again, how would you collaborate with local community organizations and advocacy groups to best help our community? And for all of those in the audience, if you could please silent your telephones.
Sorry, give me a second, uh. That, you know, I've always been in a, in a sense, a little bit of a shy person, mostly because, you know, when I was a kid, I grew up in a small community that was far and, you know, spread out, you didn't, you didn't have this sense of community. But in my, you know, older years so far, you know, I've, I've gotten better at just talking with people and I like to hear about, I like hearing people's stories, like I brought up, you know, I was in the Midwest and this guy told me his whole life story about, uh, golf carts and racing and, and you know, weird conversation I have, right, I had nothing to add to it, but, so, reaching out and talking with people, um, I'm, I'm getting better at it and I'm, I'm working on it, this last weekend I did a ride-along, uh, with Officer Debiak and, uh, I hope I didn't butcher that, uh, but anyways, you know, and, and we went to the Little League tournament and, uh, you know, we're standing there and, uh, forgive me if I'm wrong, the American Legion, uh, I think it was the group that was there, uh, they were trying to put up a pop-up and, and it was failing and I ran over there and, you know, helped them put it up and we, it was broken, so we, I went and got some twine out of my car and we got some sticks and we're trying to fix it, but you know, I was able to reach out with them and just have conversations with them and by the end of the day, I'm standing there just talking with some of the people there and they were talking about In-N-Out and Costco and their, you know, their complaints and we were just having conversations with that, it was, and the goal was to have friendly conversation. Granted, our points of view differed slightly in, in one way or another on, on it, but just having the conversations, I think, and being able to be personable to go out and have those conversations is a good start. Where to keep within our community, um, just being out there, being available, going around and talking to people, being at events. Uh, that's a good, best start for someone who's a little bit more introverted like I have been, thank you.
Thank you, both of you. All right, um, another question about actively engaging and communicating with the Ridgefield community that you've been talking about a fair amount already, but one of the questions that came in was, what's your decision-making process? So I'll start with you, Mr. Mullinax, what is your decision-making process?
I mean, I, are we talking, you know, breakfast in the morning, uh, what's easiest, uh, no. Decision-making process for things that are important, um, you know, with my engineering background has always been, okay, first, I need to meet with the customer and, you know, the customer in this sense, you know, community, understand what they need or, you know, obviously I live here, uh, maybe I, you know, maybe I'm the customer in a sense, but, um, so, is writing out a scope of work, um, in, in, I guess in policy, maybe just a, a set of things that we need to achieve. And then once you have that set of, of things that we need to achieve, if I don't know it in engineering, the first thing that we always do, if you don't know it, go learn it. At least enough to find out and be able to, to talk about it or to understand it and talk to somebody else and clearly communicate what you, what you need. Because you don't always know how, uh, electric car or battery works for, uh, you know, a Tesla or something like that, but, and then once you have what you need, um, and, and, you know, finding out who can do it, um, you know, setting up the plans, reviewing the plans. You gotta review the plans and make sure, you know, you've read it once, I know what I want, I know what I'm gonna get, we'll read it one more time, because what didn't I think about, what, you know, I forgot that if, you know, we get halfway through it and they need to do more work, am I gonna say, no, 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 that's all I got, or, you know, we can do a little bit more, or do I need to add things? So that, giving it a, one extra look, um, and then, and then just following through, you know, and then reviewing it afterwards, you know, did I, did I meet my goals? Do I need to, to start again, do I need to, to, you know, return to a certain thing? Yeah, I think that's what I got.
Thank you, Ms. Mullinax, Ms. Favela?
Thank you. My natural decision-making process, I do a lot of listening with my eyes. And what that means is I listen to what's not being said, um, and really trying to make sure that I'm looking at all things that aren't just on the table, aren't surface, going a little bit deeper. Um, when you do make a decision, are there unintended consequences that we can think about before we move forward with this? And how is this decision going to impact someone? Sometimes I have a knee-jerk reaction, usually with, um, what I'm gonna eat for breakfast. Uh, but with larger things, it really is just taking a moment to step back and make sure I can collect myself, uh, check my own temperature gauge and make sure that I'm not coming from a place, uh, that is just being impulsive with that decision, but making sure that there's like a thoughtful process behind that before that decision's being made, thank you.
Thank you, both of you. We're gonna jump back into a growth question. And this question was asked about what is your biggest concern with the growth that we've seen? And what do you think that the council should do about it? What would you as a counselor, um, advocate doing about it? So, Ms. Favela, we'll start with you.
Growth, this is like, it's so complex, I, you know, my, that, again, that impulsive like, decision or answer that I want to give is our schools, but it's not the city, it's our citizens, like, I'm worried that we're gonna get to a place with our growth that we're not gonna pass a bond and our kids are being stuffed into tin cans. This is not the city's, um, responsibility though, I just am aware of that. Um, but making sure on the other side, things that we can control, um, making sure that we're maintaining our natural resources as we grow. This is probably Ridgefield's biggest, um, place that we have, like our natural resources are the most important thing. So making sure that we're not filling every nook and cranny with something because we have to grow. And when we look at how we have to grow, how can we continue to grow, but not just fill those nooks and crannies, but create the space that we can preserve our natural resources and not tap into those things unnecessarily. I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Molenax.
Oh, uh, like she said, you know, that's a tough one. It's the, you know, wacky, wobbly, inflatable tube man, kind of like all over the place, right? Like, there's so many things that are going on. Um, as a city, we need to be prepared for things to grow. I don't think we have the choice, right? I mean, it's not like we can pump the brakes and say, you know, nobody lives, nobody's gonna move here anymore, no more businesses. I mean, sure, in some sense of the way, but I think thoughtfully making sure that we plan and we think about everything that we change. Because once we take away like a natural park and put a business there, it will never return. Weird sound. Uh, I don't know what that was. You know, once we get rid of those things, they're gone. If we, if we, you know, paved the water park and we put businesses down there, the water park is now businesses. So thoughtfully thinking about where we wanna go as a city. Do we wanna be a city or do we want to be our little town? Um, I think that's where we need to, to function. I agree. You know, there's, there's things, you know, like the schools and, and, and parking and all those things that we can't necessarily uh, you know, control right now, but um, careful planning on where we're putting things, what we're allowing to be removed, what we're allowing to be put in is what we need to focus on.
Thank you to both of you. Alright, we have time for two more questions. Uh, the second to last question we're going to ask, it starts with you, Mr. Molenax, and that is, what steps would you take to ensure transparency and accountability in the city council's decisions?
Uh, what steps? I mean, transparent? I mean, already there's a lot of checks and balances in, right? I mean, everything is, is, you know, the, the public open meetings act or whatever. But I think it's important to, to be out there and talking with the public and getting their opinion. And when they ask an opinion, you know, being honest and open about it. I think that a lot of the decisions that get made in this room or in, you know, the council or, you know, the group of people that will be involved. Most people don't think about or hear about or even wanna know about. But, you know, um, I think putting it out there and um, I don't know, that's a tough one. Just being more open with it. I know that for me, hearing about these things, I've not really heard about these things until after the fact, like the Costco or the, you know, those things. I don't hear about those things, you know, unless I'm actively looking for it. And granted, in the last year or so, I've tried to look into those things more. But maybe we need to, to focus on somehow of, of getting people to hear that more, um, the more important things. I know that it gets put out on, on, you know, I guess it's X now. I still call it Twitter, but um, I don't know, that's a tough one. Uh, other than what's already out there, I mean, it's pretty, I mean, you can request anything, right? So that's all I got, sorry.
Ms. Vavella?
Can you repeat, please?
I can, yes. Uh, what steps would you take to ensure transparency and accountability in the city council's decisions?
I think operating in transparency is always the best key. There's decisions that are being made that I don't think any one person personally is making these decisions. They're usually made as a group and um, you can see who can vote on it, who votes yes, who votes no. Um, but I think on the backend of this is having that relationship and the openness with our community that when they're asking questions about what is happening, that we answer those questions with transparency and welcome them to the table on what that process actually looks like. Um, when you are open and welcoming, uh, accepting of people's communication and just really authentically coming to the table yourself with answering questions and where things are at. Or even being able to admit when you're not fully aware of what's going on, but you're, you know, trying to figure it out too. Is it comfortable to say that to someone? No, but it allows them to know that you know, you're being as transparent as possible and that you're going to give them all the information that you have.
Thank you to both of you. Alright, the final question. This is one that is one of the most important questions that we deal with here in Ridgefield. And that is roundabouts, yay or nay and why? Ms. Vavella, final question.
Oh, the roundabouts. I say yay if you know how to drive in them. Um, yeah, I mean, they're good to help with traffic flow. It's better than getting backed up on a stoplight or uh, red lights, but I've told my husband this joke before, but he didn't take driver's ed and I did. And sometimes he'll do something and I'm like, sorry, honey. Um, you didn't take driver's ed and it's obvious. But not in all. That's anyway, yeah. I, but yeah, I think they're good for flow of traffic and space and being able to co- accommodate um, all the turns and the roads that we have. Uh, I just wish people would slow down and pay attention in the roundabouts and really figure out how to use them appropriately so they work in the way that they're intended to.
Thank you, Mr. Molenax. Same question.
Uh, I had this conversation actually this weekend at that uh, Little League tournament uh, with people and I have mixed feelings. When I, they started putting them in in Lacey, I hated them because I didn't understand them. Right? Because there's just always cars coming and you know, like people are going through them fast. And I feel like, you know, I'd rather have the, like, the ability to just be told, you can go now. And now that I'm more used to them, they are more effective. Where I don't think they are effective is in industrial areas where you have to get semis and, and tractor trailers and larger vehicles and box trucks through. They become a hazard in some sense. Um, so I think that roundabouts, yay. Residential parking or residential areas and, and that, uh, commercial areas, nay, because I, the truckers that I, I know uh, hated them because they offer a lot of, you know, obstacles, try not to go over the edge and, you know, not try, hit other vehicles. Cause if you've ever seen one go in the far one, which they generally try to go and then they cut over, it becomes a hazard, right? And if, my mom, I know when she first came here, she was like, what the heck is going on here? Like, I almost died trying to get here. Because she was on the inside of a semi, but thoughtful planning, yay.
Thank you for taking the hard questions, both of you. Appreciate it. And with that, um, you've made it through the gauntlet of the questions that have been asked by our residents. Thank you so much for that. We now have time for uh, closing remarks from both of you and we will reverse the order that we started in. So, Mr. Molenax, you'll go first.
Uh, that's a tough one. Uh, we've sat here under the, under the microscope for a while, but um, you know, at the end of the day, I don't have a lot of experience in, in city council. I have, you know, a growing experience on the, the board of trustees for the, you know, the mosquito uh, control district. Um, at the end, but at the end of the day, you know, I have a background in, in engineering with, you know, detailed analysis and data analysis and, and looking at things. But mostly overall, I love the area and I wanna get more involved. So I'm willing to, to sit here, to be here, to, you know, fall under that because of that, because I want to be part of the, you know, say, old guard. I want to be part of this town. So uh, you know, consider that and I hope to see more of you regardless of the outcome, so.
Thank you, Ms. Molenax. Ms. Vavella?
Thank you. First, I want to show appreciation to everyone who showed up here tonight. Um, and thank you for um, being here as well, uh, even though being new and being able to just share yourself with us. Uh, I appreciate. And for the record, my husband does know how to drive, even though I made that joke earlier. I am just appreciative that um, I can be here in this space. I've learned so much being just a citizen and a parent here in Ridgefield, but also being involved with the city with the last couple of years and you know, I've ran for council before. I don't know if y'all know that. Um, and I didn't get it, and I'm really glad that I didn't get it at the time because uh, there were so many holes that I needed to fill before I felt ready. Um, so I've given myself some time and I feel like I've filled the holes as much as I possibly can, but you still don't know what you don't know until you don't know it. Um, but I'm willing to be here um, and support our community in the way that I feel like it needs to be supported. So I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you to both of our candidates. We give the candidates a round of applause, please. As we said at the beginning, this is not an easy task to sit in front of your community members and take these questions. Um, but it's the job of being an elected official, uh, appointed or elected is to go out there and have those conversations. And sometimes not the easy ones, but sometimes it's the tough ones. And you guys have put yourself out there to have those tough conversations already. So I know I appreciate it and we appreciate it as a community. Um, with that, I'll just state that the next steps for this process is that on April 11th, at the regular city council meeting, our Ridgefield city council in a study session will do interviews. I'm looking at our city clerk who is nodding to tell me, yes, Steve, that's correct. Perfect. Um, that we will have a study session that will probably start five or five thirty. We'll finalize that, but uh, that'll be on the 11th. We'll have interviews with the city council. They'll have questions of their own for you and then they will deliberate and take action to appoint one of you at that meeting. Uh, there will be a swearing in at that point. So uh, we look forward to the continuation of the process. Uh, for any of you who had questions and weren't able to ask them, please do get them to us or get them directly to the candidates and we'll make sure that if it comes to us, we'll make sure we get those to you all. So that you can take a look at them and get back to those uh, residents, constituents. And thank you again for coming. Have a great evening.